Time being six P M. Today being December seventh, two thousand and eighteen. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. I'll read the agenda. Six P M. Called to order, six P M. Meet with Soil Board, six P M. Board of Health Public Hearing, related to, relative to the addition of Chapter Five Tobacco and Smoke Apparatus Regulations to the Town of Freetown Board of Health Regulations. Six P M. Board of Health Variants for six Paul Ave. Board of Selectmen Discuss Act on Host Community Agreement Template for American Tenants. Discuss Act on Employee Forward Online Payroll Portal Service Provided by Harper's Payroll Services. Act on Contract Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Nineteen Environmental Services for Holland Road Landfill with Woodward and Curran as submitted by Health Agent Derek Cito. Act on Ambulance Abatements Writeoffs from November twenty eight, November two thousand and eighteen as submitted by Fire Chief Gary Sylvia. Except Discuss Letter of From Robert L. Exapharis. Trustee Brayley Road Complex Five One Five Three Trust Regarding. Five One Five Three Trust Regarding Brayley Road Land. Approved Snowplow Contract Two Thousand and Eighteen Nineteen Winter Season for Michael Trahan. Act on Annual Renewal of Class Two, Class Three Motor Vehicle Dealers License Issued by Board of Selectmen. Class Two Herbie's Auto Repair and Sales Copperhead Customs Cycles, Class Three Big Wheels Truck Sales, Inc., D M. Auto Enterprises. Act on Renewal Option for Two Thousand and Nineteen in Lakeville Community Access Media. Act on Approval of Board of Selectmen's Meeting Minutes for December fifth, December seventh, December eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. Town Administrators Report. Board of Health Nothing Besides the Variance That Was Listed Above. Personnel Board Received Review of Compensatory Time Policy for Hiring Policy and Hiring Policy as Submitted by Town Administrator David Demarche and Executive Administrator Assistant Hallie Galls. Appoint Jeff Chandler as Conditional Building Commissioner Effective October first, two thousand and eighteen. Signed Change Use Status For Michael R. De Genis Dispatch Trainee Effective December first, two thousand and eighteen as Submitted by Police Chief Carlton Abbott. Signed Change of Status Form By Samantha R. Caden Dispatch Trainee Effective December first, two thousand and eighteen as Submitted by Police Chief Carlton Abbott. Signed Change of Status Form For Mark Lawrence Call Firefighter Effective December third, two thousand and eighteen as Submitted by Fire Chief Gary Sylvia. Signed Change of Status Form For Stephen Maderas Firefighter E M. T. Paramedic Effective January first, two thousand and nineteen as Submitted by Fire Chief Gary Sylvia. Signed Change of Status Form For Call Firefighter As Listed Below Effective January first, two thousand and nineteen as Submitted by Fire Chief Gary Sylvia. Appoint George Martin to Finance Committee Effective December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen. Accept Letter of Resignation From Derek Rocha Economic Development Committee Effective December tenth, two thousand and eighteen. Accept Letter of Resignation From Tim McIntosh Temporary Time Recordings Clerk For Building Police Committee Subcommittee As Signed. And Signed Change of Status Form Effective October thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. New Business Dates For Upcoming Board of Selectmen's Meeting Monday December, January seventh, Tuesday, January twenty second, Monday, February fourth, Tuesday, February nineteenth. And Executive Session. I'm asking General Law Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One A three to Discuss Strategy With Respect to Litigation If An Open Mean Law May Have Detrimental Effect. And Litigation Position And The Body, Public Bodies Of The Public Body And Chair So Declares Accelerate Recycling Versus Town of Freetown. Since We Don't Have A Quorum Tonight For That, We Will Not Be Entering Into Executive Session. And That Is It For The Agenda. So First We Have The Soil Board. Does The Soil Board Have A Report For Us?
Thank you, Mr. Do I Have A Report For You? Yes. Time Being six oh four, I'll Call The Meeting Of The Freetown Soil Board To Order At The Minutes Reflect The Members That Are Present. Anybody Recording The Meeting?
Free Cam.
Hi, Free Cam. What Else? That's all right.
I blame it on Tim. Get right it on top of here or something.
It's On The Next Page.
This is my, okay, This Is The Agenda Here. So Stop By, I'll Read The Agenda For Tonight's Meeting. List Of Topics. Vote To Approve Payroll Authorization Form For Current Chairman. Number Two Signed Permits For Permit Number Zero Five Three Zero Chase Road Property Of John Mello Permit Number Zero Five Two Nine Brayley Road Property Of John Mello. Review Past Meeting Minutes. Any Other Business Property Be Considered By The Board? Okay, Last We Met, We Had Voted To Issue A Permit Conditionally Upon Receipt Of The Filing Fee, The Tipping Fee, Performance Bond, Correct?
Yes.
And Chris, We've Received All Those?
Yes.
Okay, That, We've Already Voted To Sign These Things, So If We Could Just Sign Them Now While We're Here. How Many Copies Do We? Just The Two, One Of Each, Okay. Again, I Went A Little Bit Out Of Order, I Apologize. Vote To Approve Pay, Board Payroll Authorization Form For Current Chairman. You Had Done That For The Past Chairman. And What That Allows With A Vote Of The Board, We Keep That Form On File. And That Way We Don't Need To Have A Meeting Just To Sign Chris's Payroll. In Speaking With The Town Accountant, She Had Said Rather Than Just Name The Actual Chairperson Because Chairman Can Sometimes Change. If We Just Name It As The Current Chairman, Then We Need To Do This Once And Only Once. See That? I'm Already Streamlining. So I'll Entertain, I'll Entertain A Motion That We, That We Sign This Board Payroll Approval Authorization Form With The Authorized Person's Name Being Current Chairman.
I'll Make That Motion.
Second.
Motion Made And Supported. Any Further Discussion On The Motion? Hearing None. All Those In Favor Signify By Saying Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Abstained, Ayes Carry. Okay, You Have A Copy Of The Past Meeting Minutes. We'd Like To Review Them, And We Can Vote On Them Now.
Approve His Threat. Make A Motion Approve His Threat.
I Have, There's A Motion On The Floor To, On Which? What Is This Here? Oh, Okay. So We Have Two Sets. We Have The Minutes From November nineteenth, And That Was Just The One Where We Didn't Have A Clerk. And Tim Was Kind Enough To Take The Minutes. And Then We Have The Second One On December third. Is That Motion For Both Of Them?
Hold On One Second. I'll Make My Motion Cover Both.
I'll Second That Motion.
Motion Made And Supported To Approve The Minutes For Both December nineteenth And December third, November nineteenth, Excuse Me, Pardon Me. Any Further Discussion On The Motion? Hearing None. All Those In Favor Signify By Saying Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Abstained, Ayes Carry It. Any Other Business To Come Before The Board? Just An F Y I, We Had Voted At The Last Meeting To Send Out A Letter To Those Folks Where They May Have Had A Slope That Was Greater Than Three To One. And Our Motion Was To Send A Letter To Those Asking Them That Within Thirty Days' Time That They Have Some Sort Of Protective Fencing. So Folks Don't Take A Stumble Down Off The Top. So That Letter Has Been Sent. And If You'd Like, I Can Schedule An Inspection Or I Can Go Out. Either Way. What's The Board's Pleasure? Do You Want Me Just Go Out And Look At It?
Yeah, It Only, It Only Pertains To.
Yeah, Couple, It's Two, Two Places. Yep, Yep. Okay, Anything Else? Okay. That Being Said, I Like To Wish Everybody A Merry Christmas. And Have A Safe Holiday Folks.
Thank You. Motion To Adhere In The Soil Board.
Second.
Motion Made Support To Adhere From The Soil Board. Any Further Discussion? Hearing None. All In Favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Abstained, Ayes Carry It. Thank You Guys.
Thank You. And The Board Selectmen Also Would Like To Recognize Both Laurie Dismaris And The Kevin Dismaris And All Of The Cultural Council For Setting Up A Great Event We Had.
Thank You.
On, I Think It Was The Tenth?
It's The Ninth.
The Ninth. It's All Blurred.
Carried Over Into The Tenth.
Yeah. It Was An Excellent Time. Ever Wish More People Came Down.
Good Crowd Though.
Good Crowd. Caroling, Caroling And.
Yep, Food Drive, Santa Claus Showed Up. We Lit The Christmas Tree. We Do A Food Drive Every Year. You Bring A Can, You Get A Raffle Ticket. Those Who Win Gets To Hit The Switch On The Christmas Tree.
That's Right.
So This Year Was A Little Girl Named Morgan, So. Very Fun Time Had By Everybody. So Thank You.
Thank You.
Yep. Have A Great Night.
Board Of Health Public Hearing Relative To Chapter, Relative To Addition Of Chapter Five Tobacco And Smoking Apparatus. Well, That's What's Next On My Order. You're Here For The Variance?
Yeah.
We'll Use Chavis Prior Take It Out Of Order And Do The Variance First. Help You Touch It.
Got You Yet.
Andy, You Have Green Cards?
Yep.
Thank You.
Only Has One From Back, But Yes, The.
We Just Got To Read It Into The Record For The Green Card. This Is William T. Junior And Sharon A. Sylvia Sylvia Family Living Trust Eight Paul Ave, East Freetown, Mass. Oh Two Seven One Seven. If You Want To Come Before The Board And Explain What You Want To Do, Please Say Your Name And Address For The Record.
Jonathan Pink From Azur Land Sciences.
Thank You.
Are They Clear? Are They Going To Be Able To See?
This Is For Us. We're The Board.
Oh, Okay.
Just The Two Of Us Tonight Unfortunately.
Yeah, Well, Septic Repair, We Got Failed Legion Care Here And Putting In A New System In Back And Such Is The Case In Heaven Heights. You Got Small Lots And A Lot Of Wells, So We Had To Putting This In Here. We Have Three Wells That Were Within A Hundred Feet Of Needs Notification. One Is The Locust Well And Mister Beatty's On This Side And Mister Sylvia's On This Side. So We're Looking For Variances To Eighty Two, Eighty Four And Ninety Five.
Can We Show That On The Plan? Not That There's Going To Be A Problem With This One, But In The Future, Just Do Ya, Either Do An Arc To Show Where The Circles Show Where It Falls. I Know You're Falling Within. Or Put A Line And Show Where It Falls, So That's More Understandable. So You're Looking For A Variance Just For Well Variances From Your Own And Toolies? And You're Not Within The Fifty Feet On Any Of Them Correct? Any Questions Charlie? Anybody From The Public Here With A Question?
I Just Have A Question. Now, I Know The House Is Being Flipped.
Can You Please Say Your Name And Address?
William Sylvia, Eddie Paul Abbott.
Thank You.
All Right. I Know The House Is Being Flipped And I Don't Have Any Objections Really To The, To The Work They Want To Do. I Just Want To Be Assured By The Board That It Will Be Done Correctly According To Code And It Will Be Inspected By The Town.
All Right, So He's Actually Not Proposing To Do Anything Outside Of Code Except For We Have A Local Board Of Health Requirement That Has To Be A Hundred Feet Separation. The State Requires Fifty Feet. So Like Most Towns, We're A Little Bit More Aggressive Than The State. But If He Were To Get This Here, He Could Go His Life To The State And Get It Directly Through The State With The Fifty Foot. So That's Where There's An Issue. Once You Get Below Fifty Feet, Then He Has Designed A Totally Separate System.
Oh, Yeah, The Closed System. Like I Said, I Don't Have Any Objections. I Just Want To Be Assured That There Aren't Any Shortcuts Being Made Since The House Is Being Flipped And That It Will Be Inspected By The Town According To.
As The Health Agent, It's My Job To Go Out There. I'll Be Inspecting The Bottom Hole. I'll Be Making Sure That The System's Put Into Place Properly, So We'll Be Getting Inspected.
And I Do A Plan Afterwards And It's In The Ground. Submitted To The Board.
Any Other Questions Or Concerns?
Uh, No, We Don't.
Thank You Sir. Any Other Questions, Concerns From The Public? Okay. I'll Entertain A Motion.
I'll Make A Motion That We Allow For The Variance.
I'll Second The Motion To Allow For Variance For The Three Wells Eight Ninety Five, Eight Four And Eighty Two Feet. Motion Made And Seconded. Any Discussion On The Motion? Hearing None. All In Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion Carries. Hey, Can You Update That Plan And Recent? With The Correct Distance On It? Either Put The, You Can Put The Sort Of Line, Dash Line With Correct Distance On It.
Okay.
If You Have Any Questions, Give Me A Call In The Morning.
Okay, You Going To Hold On To This?
Yes.
This Stays With That, Saves The Record.
Okay, Thank You.
Thank You. I Usually Prefer They Do An Like A Radius, So You Can See Exactly Where It Falls. Without That, We're Just Not Taking For It.
Well, I Took A Measurement.
Yeah, You Can Do The Scale. All Right. Back To The Board Of Health. I'll Sign As Chair. We're Trying Charlie, We're Trying.
I Think You Decide For Chair. Haven't Done What He's Done Well. Done The Up Time.
Been Two Years Since I've Done One. Hopefully It'll Be The Last. Okay. While You're Up Here, Let's Discuss The Chapter Five Tobacco And Smoking Apparatus Regulations.
So This Is Really Just More Continuing On The Tobacco Discussion That We Had Had About A Month Ago And Following Up On Adopting The Same State Code Of The Smoking Age Going From Eighteen To Twenty One. I Did Get One Question In The Office. Somebody Had Called, So I'll Clarify For The Record That The Smoking Age Is Going To Be Twenty One December thirty first. That That's Happening One Way Or The Other. What We're Doing By Adopting It Now Is There's A Loophole That If You Turn Eighteen On December thirtieth Of This Year, You Will Still Be Allowed To Purchase Tobacco Products For Nineteen, Twenty, Twenty One. If We Close That Loophole, Then That Goes Away And Starting December thirty first, It's Twenty One. So That Was The Only Question. They Thought That We, We Were Changing The Smoking To Twenty One. That's Happening. All We're Doing Is Closing That Loophole Which Actually For The Retail People Would Be A Logistical Nightmare. Because Now You Got A Nineteen Year Old That Walks In. So Now You Have To Figure Out, Well, Did They Turn Nineteen Before This Date Or Did They Not? Because It's A Logistical Nightmare. So As Of December thirty first, If You're Not Twenty One, That's It.
That's Similar To The, Oh, That's Charlie Too. That's Similar To The Alcohol. When They Changed The Alcohol Rules Correct? Back In The Early Eighties? Late Seventies? Mid Sixties Was It?
Maybe In The Eighties, Well.
Well, That's Why I Turn To You.
The Second Part To This Which Will Probably Be, I'm Assuming In The Next Month Or So, Is As That Cluster That We're In Now, We're Going To Be Accepting Tobacco Regs As A Cluster. So That One Our Inspectors Are Coming Through. It's Nice And Easy, Same Regulations. That'll Be In About A Month. This Part We Needed To Get In Now. We Need To Have That Closed.
And Did We Vote On This Already?
We Couldn't. It Wasn't, We Had To Post It A Different Way.
And We Went To The Posting Procedure?
It Had To Be Advertised And So Now We Can Be Done.
Any Other Questions Charlie?
Nope, I'm Good. I Understand The Situation. Yes, Having Lived Through It.
Been Through Those Once Before. No, Is It Going To Be Similar? That Workers Will Still Be Able To Sell Tobacco Products? They Just Won't Be Able To Consume Tobacco Products? Just To Sell Them? Like Alcohol, You Can Sell Alcohol At? At Eighteen? Serve Drinks At Like Nineteen Or Twenty? To Be A Waitress Or Something?
Yeah, I Thought, I Think It's Eighteen, But.
I Think It's Twenty One Now. I Think Straight Across The Board It's Twenty One.
Do You Know Any?
Actually, I'm Not A Hundred Percent Sure. I'd Have To Look To See If It's Consuming. I Know You Can't Purchase.
It's Different Age For Package Store Versus A Waitress Or Bar Attender, Yeah.
You Won't Be Able To Serve Or Purchase Under Twenty One, But I, Like If You Saw A Nineteen Year Old Smoking A Cigarette, I Don't Know Necessarily If That's Ewful Or Look Into That.
Well, Depends On Where They Bought It, Their Town, That Town Adopted It And All That Stuff. It's Going To Be One Of Those.
Okay, So I'll Entertain.
The Other Question I Had Was About The Fines And Enforcement On It. Derek Had Looked Into That And Said It Is Guided By State Regulations.
Right Now It Is. I'm Sure It'll Be Spelled Out A Little Bit Clearer Once We Get Those New regs For The Whole Cluster, But It's Enforced Just Like Anything Else, Right? Through This Thing They Have There. Specifically, You Get A Warning That It's Hundred Dollar, Two Hundred, It's In A Certain Time Thing. So That, That Always.
On The Server, On The Seller.
On The Seller, Yeah.
Any Other Questions? Anybody Else Any Questions? Okay, I'll Entertain A Motion To Endorse.
I'll Make A Motion To Endorse The Revision Of The Regulations Of Chapter V Five Tobacco And Smoke Apparatus Regulations.
I'll Second The Motion. Need Discussion On The Motion? Hearing None. All In Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion Carries Manus. You're Here For One Other Thing Derek?
Yeah, The Woodward And Curran Contract.
Why Don't We Take It Out Of Orders? Just So You Can Be Done With That And We Can Set You Free. Act On Contract Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Nineteen Environmental Service Holland Road Landfill With Woodward And Curran Submitted By Health Agent Derek Cito.
It's The Same Contract That We've Always Had. It Just Didn't Get Handled Quite Properly. I Thought It Was Something I Could Sign. It Wasn't, So We Were Bringing It Here. But It's The Same Contract That We've Been Doing With Woodward And Curran.
Monetary Change?
I Don't Think So. Or If It Was, It Was Minimal. It Might Have Been Like Fifteen Hundred Or Something Like That.
Do You Know What We Carry In The Budget? It's No Different.
What I Had, What I Had In The Budget, What I Had Budgeted Was The Number That Woodward And Curran Said.
Twenty Nine Five.
I Don't Need More Money Or Anything Or.
It's Just You Need Us To Sign Instead.
Right.
You Direct Sign. I'll Entertain A Motion To Endorse.
I'll Make The Motion That We Endorse The Contract With Woodward And Curran.
I'll Second The Motion. Hearing, Any Discussion On The Motion? Hearing None. All In Favor?
Aye.
Check Any Things Off. We've Been On Order. Thank You Derek.
Thank You. Happy Holidays Everyone.
Happy Holidays. Thank You. Christmas Pie? You Going?
I'll Be There.
Okay. Discuss Host Community Agreement Template For American Tenants. Mr. Keough, Can You Give Your Name And Position For The Record?
Timothy Keough, CEO Of American.
Good Seeing Again Sir. So You've Spoken To Counsel?
And I Have Spoken To Him. The Individual Host Community Agreement Is Going To Be To The Leases That Are Occupying The Space. American Is The Holding Company Of The Company That's Leasing The Space. There, A Number Of Spaces Is Going To Open Up As The Building Expands. Every Individual Company Will Need To Have A Host Community Agreement Signed By The Board. It'd Be My Recommendation To The Board To Bring Those Companies In Prior To Signing Them So You Can Get To Meet With Those People Are And Get A Little Sense Of The Business That They're Going To Operate And.
Similar, Can I Jump In? So Under The Old Rules From The Department Of Public Health, Their Application Required A Letter Of Support. So In The Past, We Brought One Of Our Tenants Forward, BASK, Formerly Known As Cultural Compassion, Forward To Receive A Letter Of Support From The Board Of Selectmen That They Would Then File With Their Application As A Way To Kind Of Tick One Of The Boxes On The Application Process. But They Did Come In And Present Themselves. We Look At This As, This Is The Kind Of New Version Of The Letter Of Support. Under The Cannabis Control Commission, They No Longer Require A Letter Of Support. They Require A Host Community Agreement. So This In Addition To, Like I Said, This Would Be The Form Of The Document That We Would Use To Come Forward. They Present Themselves, Say We're Going To Take Occupancy Of Building One Or Unit Three. You Guys Have The Opportunity To Ask Any Questions Of The Background Of The Company And.
So This Is The Old Non, Letter Of Non Opposition?
Correct.
So That's Gone. This Is Taking That Place And You've Got, We've Got To Do It.
No, Originally When We Discussed This, Charlie The First Time They Came In. So The Envelope Itself Is Owned By American As When We Do Business With American. They Signed The Host Community Agreement That It Said They Had To Pay All The Taxes. They Had To Pay The Extra. They Agreed To Pay The Extra Dollar Square Foot. So The People Inside, We Signed In The Agreement That They Wouldn't Have To Pay, So Then Why Not Double Dip It? So This Is Just The, I'm Correct? Kind Of A Mechanism, Right? Like We, They Need To File This With Their Application By The Entity's Name. So They Would Come Forward And Say We're, You Know, BASK Inc. And We Would Get The Agreement. I Guess The Goal Here Is To Get The Framework And The Legal Work Done So That We Can Just Kind Of Modify The Name. They Come In, Present Themselves. You Guys Ask Questions, Make Your Decision.
You're Going To Be Responsible For, As American. You're Going To Be Responsible For The Real Property, The Real Property Taxes On Those Things.
Correct.
The Intent, The Leasers Won't Be. However, They Are Still Going To Be Responsible For Personal Property Taxes. So Computers, Desks, All That Stuff They Will Still Be Responsible For On P M. Roads.
Yep, Yep. Any Normal Taxes Of Any Other Business That Would Be Operating Here. So They Come Through The Environmental Controls, The Computer Systems. Any Of The Equipment, Things Like That.
And That's Specifically Spelled Out In Here. We Did Look At That Today. So This Rework, I Don't Have A Problem With They Rework It.
I'm Satisfied With It. I Spoke To Mark About It This Morning And Then I Also Spoke To You Today About It. We Have A Handle On What We're Trying To Do And I Think That We Do Have Two Entities That Are Going To Be Put On The Agenda To Come In. One Is American Brands And The Second Is BASK. So Maybe The Next Agenda, We Might Want To Have Both Those Companies.
And You Relate Him The Concerns I Had With The American, American Brands? That There's A Separation, Corporate Separation?
Yeah, It's A Separate Entity.
It's A Whole, It's A Massachusetts LLC Or? No, It's A C Corp. C Corp. So American Brands Will Be Applying For A License For The Common Law.
I Just Didn't Want To Have Duplicity Where The Two Names Are The Same And Now We Have Two Host Community Agreements. Which One's Valid? So We Have One With The Company That Holds The Building And Then If There's Other Americans Or Whatever, They'll Be Slowly.
Mark Was Very, Very Clear About That. You Know, That, You Know, The Brands One Doesn't Supercede The Old One.
They May Rename That One Anyways, But.
It'd Be Easier On Not If It Was Renamed. Steve's Brands, That's, Tim's Brands.
A C Brand.
A C, Whatever.
Clean It Up A Little Bit.
Because That's Where I Was A Little Concerned. I Wanted To Make Sure You Weren't, The Same Company Wasn't Submitting A New Host Community Agreement. And Then Down The Line, This Board May Know What Was Going On, But Down The Line, Couple Years, There May Be Some Cloudy Issues In Which One Is The One We Enforce. Any Other Questions, Concerns, What The Contract? Do We Need A Full More Vote To Accept The Way It's Written?
Uh, No, At This Point, I've Been Afforded By Counsel To Form. And What We'll Do Is We'll Just Place Them On The Agenda And Have Both Companies Come In And Introduce Themselves And Give Us, You Know, Week Eye Some, You Know, Information About Who They Are, What They're About.
Thank You Sir.
Yeah, Thank You.
Have A Good Night.
Happy Holidays. How Do We Get On? Is There?
I Just, It'll Be For The Seventh. If That's So Soon, Let Me Know And We'll.
See Better. Excellent.
I See Construction Going On.
That's Right.
I Actually Went Up There Took Pictures And Sent It To The Board Members.
Invite Today.
All Right, Yeah, We're, Guys Are Flying Out There. Close Four Foundations On Friday, But I Was Just Looking At The Weather. One Hundred Percent Chance Of Rain.
Rain Concrete.
Anyways, Thank You All Very Much. Happy Holidays.
Happy Holidays. Discuss An Act On Employee Forward Online Payroll Portal.
Okay. This Was An Item That Was Brought To Our Attention By The Town Employees To The Finance Team And We Took A Look At It. And The Finance Team Met And Discussed It And They Feel Like Something Worthwhile And That We Can Pursue. Basically What It Is, It's A Payroll, An Online Version Of A Paycheck. So You Can Elect To Say, All Right, I Don't Want This Stuff Anymore. I Can Go Online. Yeah, as a portal, you log in and we have a password, you can get your, for example, now if you need a W two, you gotta contact the treasurer. And she's gonna get a, you know, put a request in for the, everything's there, all your approvals, deductions, all online. It can be printed over easily, uh, by, uh, the employee. The cost is thirty-five cents per employee, uh, and we have to do all of the employees. If some of them don't want it, then we're still gonna pay them thirty-five cents. It comes out to be about a thousand dollars a year. Seventy-six percent of the employees, we did a survey, seventy-six percent of the employees want this as a benefit. It's available to both part and full-time employees and like I said, there's a portal to allow them to go on and look at their information.
Are we mandating this? Cause you said.
Uh, no, we're not, no.
Is that something we elect or something the employees elect to do?
They, they will elect. We'll, we, we're gonna pay for all of the employees, but, you know.
How much should we save by not printing out pay stubs and?
We didn't, we didn't do that kind of, we didn't do an analysis of that. It, it was more focused on the benefit to the employee, given that, um, you know, the, the readyb, uh, readiness of being able to access information that, without having to go through the town and, and, you know, get information, you know, it's almost instantaneously by logging in. I would like it better if we're getting charged per employee versus getting, you know, getting charged for employees that aren't gonna participate, but that's the deal. And once again, that's too hard for us.
That's seventy-five, uh, thirty-five cents per employee per year or is that thirty-five?
Per week, per pay period. Comes out to be a thousand dollars.
That's a little expensive.
How about we do this? How about we have a little analysis?
All right, we can take a little bit. And the other thing, maybe I can negotiate with them. I haven't ca, uh, talked to them about, um, you know, doing only the employees', you know, thirty-five cent level, you know? That might be a potential avenue to explore with the company. They were pretty firm on it to begin with and maybe we can say, hey, this is not gonna happen unless we have some given date.
Probably in the end, it's gonna be a, uh.
They say pay the cost.
Yeah, it's gotta be a paper, it's gotta be a paper cost, a time cost. Uh, the convenience of somebody who ha, an employee has a question about their pay, they can look at the stub, they can get the information probably a lot quicker than if they had to contact the, uh, the treasurer's office, that type of thing. But it probably would be bad to have the, the value of that, make the.
The only problem, I, the reason I, I asked the mandatory question is 'cause, um, I think, or not my wife, is it's mandatory where she works. That it, it's online. Um, so anytime we have to go and check to see, did she, did she, she get her overtime and she has to go online, she doesn't get a stub. And it's not an option to get a stub and it's kind of, I'm a stub keeper and I guess I'm kind of a.
I'm a stub keeper too.
So I keep it. Um, and I, exactly, I, I just put it in the file and if I need to pull stubs for whatever reason or whatever, I have them. But, um, so I can see why people won't, some people won't wanna do it.
Yeah, but there, but there was a real strong interest and that was brought to the finance team. It didn't, it came out of the blue, we didn't expect it.
When you say employees, how, whose? Is this gonna apply to retirees also? Is this gonna, like, just a town hall?
No, it's just gonna be all like, um, all in place, yeah.
In kind of police fire?
Yeah, it's time to retire.
I don't know about retirees.
Retirees, though, uh, get stubs in the town.
No, but we get through the rest of town, you know?
Anything that comes through, uh, first of all.
Oh, that's right, you're not paying through the town.
Yeah. Okay, um.
All right, we'll bring it back and maybe, uh, we'll tighten it up and see what we can.
See what, see what the offset is. If we're, if we're saving, if it's costing us a thousand and we're saving five hundred, so the net, is it five hundred? It's a little palatable.
I understand.
And the other thing, I'd rather see the people that want it to get it, you don't have to pay for the people that.
Yeah, I don't.
Don't want it.
Um, act on annuals abatements. Do you have the numbers for any child?
Yes, I, uh, contractual account allowances for the month of November would be sixty-one thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-five cents. And write-offs for the month of November would be twenty-eight thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. For a total of eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-four cents.
So I'll entertain a motion to write off eighty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-four cents.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion. Motion made and seconded. Discussion on the motion? Hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
That number just stumbles me every time I see it. Thank you. Discuss letter of, from Mr. X. Ferris.
I had met with Mr. X. Ferris, uh, and, uh, an individual who was interested in purchasing the property, probably about a week and a half ago. And he followed up with this letter, uh, that the board has, uh, relative to some of the issues that are surrounding the property. Uh, the question of ownership of, uh, one of the lots which we feel we own, but they feel that they own. Um, the, the desire to, um, uh, buy, uh, the potential purchaser saying that, that the value of the land, because it has all those tires on it, shouldn't be assessed at the level that it should be and there should be some kind of an abatement. Uh, the, um, at one point, I guess he wanted to purchase, uh, the lots eight and nine, um, but he didn't make any mention of that during the meeting. Uh, he's interested, he, he basically wants to, he said that he would like to see an elderly, uh, forty B there. But, you know, there's, there's so many different mi, uh, moving pieces here between things that have happened on the site, uh, you know, between, uh, family issues and, and the tires and, um, the, the fact that the original contractor was taking the tires out and then, uh, stopped doing that. So I, I, I'm really not sure what to recommend to the board. I, I don't know if this is something the board would wanna pursue.
I think at this point, we just acknowledge the receipt of it, cause there's, he needs to do a lot of stuff to it before we can do anything with it, so.
I think he'd have to show us something more than, um.
A, a plan.
Yeah, he'd have to, he'd have to show us a plan, he'd have to, and I, what I would like to see is financial ability to do something here. Not just talk.
Because supposedly the tires right now are, you know, four hundred thousand dollars.
The town of Freetown didn't put them there, so whoever owned the property put them there, whoever owns the property now took those tires when they, when they. When they took the property, we actually should have enforcement order to clean them, but that's not for this point. So all I recommend is, um, just acknowledging the receipt of the letter.
And the whole idea of abating, we don't have the authority to abate.
That's part of assesses. Thank you. Proof snowplow contract, two thousand eighteen nineteen, winter season for Michael Treyham.
Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second the motion, uh, motion made and seconded by Michael Treyham, two thousand eighteen nineteen, snowplow. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Act on annual renewal, class two, class three motor vehicle dealer's license. Um, we have now these licenses, Tim.
Yes.
They're bonded, they're, everything's applied for. Any complaints from neighbors or anything?
Nope, I don't have any complaints with any of these businesses.
I'll detain the motion to do both class two and, in fact, class three.
I'll make, uh, that motion.
Uh, motion made and I'll second it. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Act on renewal of option, two thousand nineteen, Lake Cam Access Media.
Uh, as you recall, last year, we entered into a three-year agreement, well, actually a one-year agreement, a two-year options. Uh, this is the second year of the agreement. Uh, the, uh, uh, second year calls for a twenty-five hundred dollar increase for two thousand and nineteen. At this point, you know, like I said, we, we had gone through the process of actually, you know, endorsing the document and they brought it back to us saying, you know, you wanna exercise your second year and, and this is what that is about.
I'll make the motion, uh, of, uh, accept the second year of the contract.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? That's twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, um, running from January first, two thousand nineteen to December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Any discussion, further discussion? Hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Act on approval of four to selectmen's minutes for December fifth, seventh, eleventh.
Okay, I'll make a motion, first of all, I'll make a motion to accept them for December five and eleven. Because I was here for, I believe, five and seven.
Which one's excess?
Uh, that should be.
Just the first one?
Yeah.
I think that's the fifth.
No, it's gotta be the fifth and the seventh.
I'll double check.
Yeah, uh, well, here, um.
The fifth should be the, uh, Freetown Elementary School, or sort of.
Okay, the fifth.
Yes.
Pardon me, the fifth was Excel, seven was, uh, so first of all, I'll do the seventh and then, um, the eleven.
Seven and eleven.
Seven and eleven.
Okay.
And then out of necessity, I'll make the, uh, motion for December fifth.
When does that have to be signed by, it's three meetings of thirty day, uh, two meetings of thirty days, three?
Uh, it has to be on the third meeting or thirty days, whichever is later.
Later.
First. We've gotten opinions on both, both sooner or later. The most recent one we got was sooner.
I thought it was, that was a, later original when they first went to the E G's, I don't know what.
Yeah, when they, the material on KP Law's website says later, but the opinion we've gotten says sooner.
I, I'm just making a motion out of necessity.
Wait, what's that called? There's a term for that?
A rule of necessity, yeah.
Rule of necessity. All right, so we'll do seven.
Seven and eleven first.
Seven and eleven first. Um, I'm concerned Charlie about you doing one for, yeah. I know the rule of necessity, but I'm not concerned for the, the board, I'm concerned for you. So you have a motion, I'll second the motion to approve December seventh and eleven. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If.
Other options, I believe you can approve them as chair.
That's what, that was my, my, my question. If Charlie abstains, um, if Charlie abstains from the vote, would I then be able to prove them as chair?
Please no. So now you can, you can prove executive session as chair, so I'm, I'm not in open sessions.
I don't know if we ever, the town, the board ever adopted that though. Like the planning board, we adopted that the chair can, um, approve. We have nothing scheduled between now and the fifth of December.
I'm sorry?
We have nothing scheduled between now and the fifth of January.
Seven, seventh January.
Nothing between now and, okay. All right, it, it's up to you if you wanna.
I'll make, I'll make the motion out of, out of necessity.
All right.
Pretty technical.
Since you're not, since you're absent for this, uh, the board's gonna use the, um, rule of necessity to record our, approved minutes for December fifth, two thousand eighteen. Mr. Sullivan, uh, made the motion, I'll second the motion, motion made and seconded. Discussion on the motion, um, the only caveat, because Mr. Sullivan was not present at that motion, at that meeting. However, we're up against the open meeting law, um, complaint, uh, open meeting law, possible open meeting law violation. We'll use the, um, rule of necessity to approve this since, uh, Stephen Pacheco's not present at this meeting. So motion made and seconded. Any discussion, further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I know that was a long way around just to approve minutes, but unfortunately, that meeting was a contentious meeting. Personal board.
Town administration.
Oh, oh, not that I wanna skip, skip you.
Wow.
Town administration's report.
I only have two things anyway.
You say that every week.
I do, I know, I do. Uh, the budget forms have gone out. Uh, I have made a recommendation to the board and to, that we, uh, ask everybody to do a little funding as we have in the past. Uh, in those instances where they need, uh, an ex, additional monies, that they have to justify those monies in the additional forms that are part of the budget package. Uh, we're hoping to have a first draft available, uh, of the budget in January. It'll be incomplete at this point only because we don't have the school number, we don't have the pension numbers, we don't have the, the insurance numbers and the vote school and the Aggie school numbers at that point. Ultimately, uh, I'm gonna be meeting in, in, well, in February with, uh, the department heads going through their budgets so that when we get to that point with Charlie and, and George are back and we start having the regular budget meetings, uh, I can help, uh, with the department heads in presenting their budgets if the board so desires. Uh, I had a meeting, uh, with our team, um, for the South Coast Rail on Friday morning. They came in, these are all the rail crossings and are part of the, the, um, the commuter rail. Uh, the timeline on all of these is twenty-twenty. Uh, all of them are pretty much non-controversial. Excuse me. Richmond and Bee, uh, Richmond and Beachwood, uh, Richmond and Ford, Ford Road, South and Chase Road. I have copies of the plans here from board at some point, wanted to take a look at them, but there's nothing in there that really, you know, caused any concern among the people, the police chief, fire chief, uh, conservation, uh, planning board, as well as all the DOT officials that have come out from Boston. So, um, we'll probably be seeing that coming up in the next few months in order to get approval from them to move forward to advertise and do the things they need to do to, uh, um, you know, get things ready for twenty-twenty and, and doing those, uh, those crossings. We're gonna have the first, uh, police station construction team kickoff on Thursday at four o'clock. Basically just to go over some accounting stuff to look at some of the things that are going on in terms of we have to get a builder's risk policy. I'm working on the well procurement already, uh, with the Indy, so we're starting to get going on that. The other thing I wanna make note of on, on the, on the other, on the South Coast Rail is I asked them to put a narrative together based upon the changes to our, the plan, so the board will have a, an understanding of each crossing and what's gonna be done there and, and writing. Thank you. That's it.
That was quick. Okay. Now, we can leave on the personnel.
All right.
The first item on the personnel is receive first review of comp, compensatory time policy and the hiring policy issued by the town administrator. And, um, basically this is just to, uh, get a firm, this is policy within the town, uh, town hall. All about competence, uh, compensatory time, uh, and its use and practices for, for bi-loyal authorities specifically.
Uh, we've been working with Charlie on this, uh, on both of these issues as personnel chair. We intended this just to be the introduction of the, of the two policies, hoping the board will take them back and, and take a look at them. What I'd ideally like to see happen is that we have, uh, three readings. Now, the first, feeing tonight in terms of transmitting those documents to you. The next meeting, having the board come back and, uh, with any changes or alterations or suggestions about how we can improve, uh, or, uh, amend the policies. And finally, the third meeting would be incorporating all those changes in and that would be the third and final reading and the board would adopt both the policies.
That's the plan.
Almost like a legislative three reading.
And the thing is, it doesn't happen, you know, one day you get it, you read it and it voted on it, so it would use, you know, a young lady, you say, oh geez, we really should've thought about that a little bit. It gives you a chance to review the policies, let it sink in and, and have some involvement and crafting it.
Absolutely.
All right, the next item is, uh, appoint Jeffrey Chandler as conditional building commissioner effective October one of, uh, twenty eighteen. And, um, this basically is just the, because he is not, uh, as of October first, qualified as a building commissioner, um, there was some confusion as to whether inspector or not. And Jackie, uh, came up with, uh, the conditional building commissioner position as being the crop of one.
So he will be at some point, uh, certified, he's just waiting to take a test or?
Right, he's just waiting to take, uh, one last test if I remember correctly.
He says he's gonna take it beginning of January.
Okay.
And, uh, he, once he passes that test, he'll be qualified as a commissioner.
As a commissioner, not just an inspector. Okay.
Accept the motion on that?
I'll make that motion with the, um, caveat that, uh, you follow up with him and make sure that that happens and doesn't slip through the track, the cracks.
Exactly. All right, uh, motion made, I'll second that. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I go Kevin in there. Next one is, uh, change of status forms. First is for a, uh, new po, uh, dispatch trainee, Michael R. DeJanis. And also, uh, second one's Samantha R. Cotton. Both, um, newly appointed, uh, trainees.
I'll make a motion to sign the, um, change of status for both Michael DeJanis, DeJanis and Samantha R. Cotton.
Motion made, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is a change of status form for call firefighter Mike Lawrence, uh, effective December third of this year.
And this is a new hire, correct?
Yes, it is a new hire.
I'll make a motion to sign the change of status form for the new hire, call firefighter paramedic. Way too far. Way too far. Mark Lawrence.
I'll second that motion. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next is a change of status form for firefighter, par- uh, paramedic, Steven Medeas, effective January one, uh, twenty nineteen, submitted by, uh, Fire Chief Gary Sylvia.
And, okay, see, that's just a coal raise, or, uh, make a motion to sign the change of status form for Steven Medeas, firefighter, AMT, paramedic, um.
All right, are, are those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the next item is change of status forms for call firefighters as listed below in the agenda, uh, effective January one, twenty nineteen, as submitted by Fire Chief Gary Sylvia. This is, uh, oh, changing the rate of pay for, uh, as we had approved at the earlier meeting, uh, basically coal raises.
Okay, um, did these go through a new hire process, do we know?
I do not know.
Uh, make sure we have, um, uh, coalism, not coalism, uh, core checks and, and the like, but, okay, I'll make the motion, I don't know, he's the pointing authority, so I'll make the motion to sign the change of status form for the persons listed in the agenda.
I'll make, uh, I'll second that motion. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the next item is the appointment of George Martin to the finance committee effective December seventeen, twenty eighteen. Um, had a letter from, uh, Mr. Martin asking to be appointed. I believe, um, that the finance committee, uh, has agreed to accept him as a member also. Um, so with that, I will accept, uh, I'll accept the motion.
Same question on this one, do we know if he filled out an application with town and?
Just a letter of interest.
He just did a letter of interest. It's, he would be appointed to an elected.
Right, but he's still being appointed to a position, okay. Uh, we should clarify that in the future, so, uh, we're gonna do it for all pro- employees, obviously elected employees, you can't do it, but employee employees, anybody we appoint, we should have something. Uh, not to do with this, I'm just making a note. I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, sign the change of status form for, uh, Mr. Martins.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next is to accept the letter of resignation from Derek Asher, uh, from the economic development committee, effective December ten, uh, twenty eighteen. He forwarded a, uh, letter of recog- resignation to, uh, town clerk.
Oh, I'll make a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Derek Asher and send a letter to him thanking him for his service at the town.
That committee's actually not in that.
You know what I'm saying? It's going to though.
Yes. Right, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Did you second?
I guess I, I.
I'm sorry, I was talking to Tim.
I guess I seconded, but anyways, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, last is to accept, uh, the letter of resignation from Tim McIntosh as temporary pot time recording clerk, building and, uh, police subcommittee, uh, and sign his status change form.
I'll make the motion to accept the re- a lot of resignation from Tim McIntosh.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion?
I'll just.
No letter, cause he's still employed.
Yeah.
He's actually, he's still doing the same job.
Yeah, you're right. Uh, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's all I have.
All right, and we will not be, we don't have a forum to go into executive session, so we will not be going into executive session. Again, the next business date, new business next dates for the board of selectmen will be January seventh, two thousand nineteen, Tuesday, January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, Monday, February fourth, two thousand nineteen, and February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Um, with no other business being before the board, I'd like to wish everybody, uh, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and enjoy the holiday season. Thank you. I'll detain the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, motion made and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.